Hello. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Board of Education Tuesday, June 6, 2017. The Safe School ambassadors at the middle school work hard to support the mission statement of the Monroe Woodbury School District. The middle school administration, faculty and staff greatly appreciate their efforts in creating a welcoming environment for all students. Please welcome representatives from the middle school's Safe School ambassadors as they lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Before we start with the commendations, which is why we're all here, I just want to say a few words. This is a large school district with many moving parts and many who contribute to its effectiveness. Our teachers who are on the front lines, our administrators who guide and organize and inspire, families who involve themselves for the lives of their children and partner with us to achieve the potential of each and every student in our care. All the support staff from bus drivers, monitors, safety personnel, coaches, clerical, thank you all. What you do is vital to creating the future. It will be led by those you have inspired. We thank you who are attending. We congratulate our honorees, those who have achieved tenure, and we say farewell to those who are leaving us and thank them for their service, to the thousands who have benefited from their care. So let's get on with things. First...
Mr. Ula.
Hmm? Is Harry going to... Harry, are you going to present things? No. You look quizzically at me, which is probably... Special Olympics presenter, Mr. Eric Ula. And who is helping?
Mike.
Mike and Lorraine will, from the board, will...
Assist.
...help with the commendations.
So on March 11th, we had our second annual elementary countywide Special Olympics competition, and this event has become a highlight in my year. There's something just very magical about this day from over 100 volunteers with smiles on their faces like you wouldn't believe. I would say the only thing better than their smiles is the smiles on the parents' faces. And I would say the only thing better than the smiles on the parents' faces would be the looks of determination in the student athletes as they're competing. And the only thing better than that look of determination is the ear-to-ear grin that they have when they receive their medals at the end. And with that, I am going to bring up the student athletes, but before I do that, I wanted to bring up two of the coaches. Dan Styler couldn't be here, but I wanted the students to get their recognition from two of their coaches. So if Soraya Myers and Karen Escobar could come up, that would be great. And I'm going to have the two of them read their athletes' names. Want to start with yours and then she'll read hers?
Tyler Adams. Logan Whitfield. He's shy. Go ahead, Logan, it's okay. Erin Cohen. Christina DePaulis. John Lombardo. Liam McMullen. Evan Paviano.
I'm going to help them.
Teddy Ialardi. Christian Medina Fenson. Griffin Patzner. Sean Tobin. Nikki Mitrión. Ryan Ali. Daniel Datillo. Yvonne Masalone. And Angelina Christie. Thank you. And Max Bexarty.
By the way, I'd like to remind everybody, if you stay to the end, we are having a reception for anyone and everyone in the cafeteria at the end. Everyone is invited. And now for the middle school Special Olympics, Mrs. Dana Shackman.
Good evening, board, parents, athletes, friends. This is my eighth year of doing middle school Special Olympics, and... Thank you. And it is definitely the icing on the cake, or the cherry on the sundae, or whatever. It's been my honor and privilege to be part of these awesome athletes' lives. They work so hard training for our Special Olympics, which takes place at West Point. We time them, we measure their throwing distances, and then all of their scores are averaged and sent to the Special Olympics Committee, where they then are paired up with athletes from the Mid-Hudson area, this year even from Westchester, and heeded against kids their age and their abilities. And I think speaking for any parent that's there, watching these kids work and compete and, like Mr. Ula said, with smiles and high fives and congratulating kids that they don't even know who are standing on the podium with them. It's just an awesome day, and again, it makes my years of teaching that much better when I have this to look forward to. So enough of my talking, because I could go on and on and on. I would now like to introduce all of our middle school athletes. So athletes, when I call your name, come on up. Chris Adorno. Of course. Over this way, go right in front. Chris, stay on the stage. Brian Aguilar. Larry Illelo. Alexa Alvarado. Paulo Baglietto. Alex Camacho is not here, but he's awesome. Derek Ciprian. Derek, yep, Derek's not here either. He too is awesome. Jordan Cooper. Not here. The rest are here, I promise. Angel Gomez. Ray Hamilton. Joey Hedy. Come here, I need a hug. Joey's going up to the high school next year. Matthew Hopkins. Kara Jepastal. Dakota Pasco. Daniel Valley. And last but not least, Andrew Vanir. How lucky am I? I would just also like to thank, and I forgot and I shouldn't have, all the women, all the coaches that helped me make this happen year after year after year. So ladies, stand up. Come on! Thank you all.
And now the Special Olympics for the high school, Mrs. Faith Faith Hipsman.
Just so everybody knows, Faith started this with me in the middle school, and as our kids went up to the high school, she is now the coach up at the high school, so this is able to just keep continuing, and she will now introduce the high schoolers.
Hi, everyone. First and foremost, I would like to thank the parents and the grandparents for their continued support in making our athletes' day so special. Second, I would like to thank the other high school coaches that help out. That would be Heidi Anger, Stand Up, Sharon Lipsky, and Chrisanne Sinersia. Without them, our varsity team would not have been so successful. Also, I need to thank the Cozy Cafe, which is run by the Life Skills Program in the high school for sponsoring our team. We were able to purchase our T-shirts and lunches for that day at West Point. Lastly, I will announce our Monroe Woodbury Varsity Special Olympic athletes. I would just like to say that our athletes have improved so much that they are competing at a higher level now at West Point. So the medals and ribbons that they won were at a higher level of competition at West Point. Okay, I'm going to announce the athletes. Our first athlete, I am happy to say she is graduating, but sad to say she won't be with us next year, and she will be missed. That's Erin Donnelly. Kathleen Dowling. Sarah Hamid. And then we had Maury Jabor, but he's with us in spirit tonight. And then we have Shannon Menzessama. Valine Mary. Our next athlete, Emily Navarro, is also with us in spirit tonight. Our next athlete is Aladdin Rabi. Kaitlyn Shaffer. Nicole Santas. Matt Stenson. And last but not least, Rosie Nigian. Thank you.
I mean, the board would like to thank all of the winners of Special Olympics and all of the coaches and organizers who put this terrific program together. It's really special in this district. And now the bus safety poster contest winners, Dawn Russell. Assisting Dawn, Anthony Anderson.
Good evening, everyone. Assisting me this evening is our new driver trainer examiner, Laura Chaluisan. And I'd like to recognize her because she is the behind-the-scenes person who puts the entire poster, safety poster contest together and organizes it. And as our newest member to our team, she couldn't believe the thousands of posters that she was going to get to see and help to judge. Ready, Laura? Okay, we're going to start with our grades K through 2, Division 1. In fourth place, Callie Hernandez from North Main Elementary School. In third place, I don't think, maybe Callie wasn't able to make it this evening, in third place, Division 1, we have Audrey Hudire from Pine Tree Elementary. Audrey? In second place, Division 1, Rihanna Parwanta from Smith Clover Elementary. And then in first place, we have Audrey Saliba from Central Valley Elementary. There you are. So there's something special I have to tell you about Audrey's poster. The poster that Laura is handing back to her tonight is not her real poster. This is a copy of her poster, because her real... Because her real poster is on its way to Albany, New York, where it's going to be judged at the New York Association for Pupil Transportation Conference in July. Okay, so congratulations. Audrey, there's one more thing for you right here, I'm sorry. The 1st place winner also gets a check, or it's actually cash, for $25 for your 1st place poster. Okay, so then moving on to Division 2, which is grades 3 through 5. In 4th place, we had Sophie Pizano. And Sophie is from Central Valley Elementary. Okay, and then we have, in 3rd place, Jalissa Rivera from Pine Tree Elementary. This is Jalissa. In 2nd place, we have Sophia Signore from Central Valley Elementary School. Does seem like a long walk. Congratulations. And then in 1st place, Division 2, is Anthony Proya from North Main Elementary. Okay, just like our last 1st place winner, Anthony's poster is in the same envelope on its way to Albany, where it's going to be judged at the summer conference for the New York Transportation Conference. All right, so we're moving right along. We have Division 3, grades 6 through 8. In 3rd place, Ariana Eisner from the Middle School. In 2nd place, we have Jessica Kiesel from the Middle School. And then in 1st place, we have Elise Hayman from the Middle School. And Elise's poster is also on its way to Albany, where it will be judged. So Monroe Woodbury students, and here's your $25 as well. I'd just like to wrap up, I would just like to say a special thank you to our bus drivers. This year, the poster contest theme was "My Driver, My Safety Hero." And, you know, it's not the first day of school where they give the students instructions on how to keep themselves safe, and maybe a few more times. It's every single day of the school year. They teach the students how to be safe in the bus and how to protect themselves outside the bus. So they are really, the Monroe Woodbury School Bus Drivers are really superheroes to us. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. They do such a good job, the Transportation Department, the great program. Odyssey of the Mind, Deborah Garland presenting. Dan Ezrodi to assist, along with Dan Willis.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. This year, the board is recognizing an outstanding Odyssey team, a team I'm very proud of. Girl power. This team won their regional competition and went on to compete at the 38th Annual New York State Odyssey of the Mind Competition in Binghamton this past April. They proudly represented themselves, our school, and our community, as they impressed the judges with their teamwork, creativity, and perseverance. I'm going to call up Team Phillips, and hold your applause, I'm going to call all the girls up first. Team Phillips, Marissa Aron, Anushree Bargovihin, Evelyn Gaines, Shereah Garish, Jada Kralik, Nicole Otavio, and Lucy Silver. Team Phillips. Come on up, Coach Phillips. Coach Phillips, too, we can't forget her. Lauren's been coaching for quite a few years, and she has an impressive track record. I should note, while they're getting their pins and their certificates, they placed 1st in the competition in their long-term division, which earned them, I think it was 200 points. And in style, they scored very, very high. It was the one area of spontaneous that got them this year. And they've made a vow to come back next year and get them.
Another great program. Johns Hopkins Certificate of Distinction, once again, Deborah Garland.
Hello, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to honor some pretty incredible students. For those of you who may not know, the Johns Hopkins University Center for Talented Youth is a world leader in gifted education. They conduct national and international talent searches to identify, assess, and recognize outstanding academic talent. Identified students are invited to participate in this annual talent search. The following students participated in the testing and received qualifying scores with high honors. And on behalf of the GNT programs, I wanted to thank the board for their acknowledgement of the fine work of our outstanding scholars.
Thank you, Deborah. For those who have received awards and have not left, let's take 5 minutes, a brief recess for you to depart if you so choose. We will return in 5 minutes. Would you like to resume the meeting, please? If you could have a seat.
Dolores is still standing.
Yeah. All right, thank you. We had a 5-minute recess, no board business took place during that. I've been reminded that this is actually the anniversary of D-Day. And so I'd like to thank the people who served our country or who are serving our country, and the families of those who have served and are serving our country on this, on this The NISMU Student Level 6 A+ Ratings, Nicole Reagan presenter.
Thank you.
Aided by Christie Lorenzo and Dan Willis.
Thank you. These students are so awesome, I didn't even tell them to do what they did. And while they were getting lined up, I was going to take a second to present you, Mrs. Rodriguez, and Mr. Hubert, and the entire board with a plaque recognizing our 6th year of Monroe Woodbury School District for Outstanding Support of Music Education, Enriching the Lives of Children, and Advancing Student Achievement. This is the 6th year we've received the 2017 Best Communities for Music Education. Level 6 is the most difficult level of repertoire. I know from being in the room with some of these students, the musicianship and the amazing things, the magic that they make happen. And I want to thank all of them for bringing that magic to our school district. I'm going to call them up by name, and if you could hold your applause until the end. We have Christina Boylan and Sidney Bulla, Gabriella Caratura, Will Carter, Angela Choi, Robert Colbath, who really made me work on that canon this year. That was a lot of finger work, thank you, Robert, for that. Ryan Coloma, Kyle Crosby, Aaron Citron, Natalie Davidson got 2 6A pluses, and Julia Groon's got 2 Level 6A pluses. That means they played on multiple instruments, whether it's piano, or singing, or two instruments. Monica Leva, Benjamin Ip, Sophie Jaeger, Alana Kim also 2 Level 6A pluses. John Cole, Trevor Ledoux, Dana Marie Larnoudi, Yana Lee, Daniel Liu, Tessa Little, Lauren Miller, Marissa Mitchell, David Mortivenko, and I got it right, and he's not even here, Fred Murad, and Kathleen Murray, Carly Newman, Stephanie Pang, Angela Prickto, Alex Prizgintis, Camilla Scanlon, Emily Shaker got 3 Level 6A pluses, Eric Schmidt also got 3 Level 6A pluses, Brian Scorsia, Shayna Steer, Hannah Wanderling, Spencer Ward, Kiana Wen, Victor I counted, last year we had 21 students, this year we had 42 students get Level 6A pluses. So that's quite an accomplishment.
And now the NISMU Majors Results.
NISMU Majors is when our ensembles go and play on either our middle school or high school stage, or they go to different school districts. And they perform in front of adjudicators that rate us according to how ensembles play across the state. There's always a conflict, but this evening, there was a Newberg Symphony rehearsal, and many of my staff are at that. So there are many more that should be on the stage who are unable to make it tonight. But I will call them all up. So teachers, if you could come on over and be ready. This was a fantastic year, we heard many positive comments from the adjudicators, and they all wanted to pass their thanks along to being an example of what music education should and can be in the public school system. Gold with Distinctions went to both the Central Valley Elementary Orchestra and the Central Valley Elementary Band, Michelle George and Sam Baldwin. Following them are Kim Harrison and Hannah Sagerstrom, who are from Pine Tree. The elementary band and orchestra got gold and Gold with Distinction. North Main Elementary Orchestra and Band went for Comments Only. And then the Middle School, which I think they were all at this rehearsal, Stephen Wing and the Chamber Chorus, Gold with Distinction. The Symphonic Band, Gold. The Symphony had to go Comments Only, only because one of the pieces wasn't in the manual, but the judges were very impressed. Wind Ensemble, Gold with Distinction. Chamber Orchestra, Gold with Distinction. And then at the High School, Treble Choir, Gold with Distinction. Symphony Band, Gold. And Symphony Orchestra, Gold with Distinction. And Jazz Ensemble, Gold with Distinction. I'm going to wait for you to be last. David Chrome with Gold with Distinction. Wind Ensemble with Gold Distinction. And thank you, Bonnie Glaser, for being here. Orchestra, Gold with Distinction.
You know, if this happened like 1 year or 2 years, you could say it was a fluke. But boy, oh boy, year after year, all the way from the very start of music education through the high school, that's just remarkable. I'm in awe. Thank you for the students and for all of the music teachers, just terrific. Class of 2017, valedictorian and salutatorian, Matthew Kravitz presenting.
These 2 poor young ladies are going to be so tired because they've heard me say such nice things about them at so many different events over the last month or 2. But I'm going to start with our salutatorian, who is Katherine Adel. Katherine, you can come on up. So once Katherine gets up here, I'll go through all her resume, that just makes her incredibly awesome. All right, so we'll start with the numbers. Give or take, her GPA is like 99.3993, which is incredibly impressive. She takes some of the hardest courses that we offer at Monroe Woodbury. She'll be attending Worcester Polytech Institute in Worcester, Mass. And she plans on majoring in mechanical engineering. What else are you going to do at Worcester Polytech? And possibly minoring in theater. But even if she doesn't minor in theater, it will always be a part of who she is. So here's what she does. She's currently the Alto Section Leader of Voice Ensemble, President of Wind Ensemble, Treasurer of the Spanish National Honor Society. She's also a member of the National Honor Society and the Drama Club. Throughout her years in high school, she's participated in all county, area, all-state, and NISMU music festivals, and studied dance at Tercikery. Did I say that right? Okay, good. She volunteers at Central Valley Elementary School throughout the school year, and for the past few summers, she's volunteered at St. Patrick's Vacation the past few summers, she's volunteered at St. Patrick's Vacation Bible School, and she also performed in the Sousa Scholarship fundraiser musical. Well, I'll say something about both you and Paulina in a second. So, congratulations, Katherine. Why don't you stand here, and then don't leave yet, though. And then our valedictorian this year, Paulina Chizov. Why don't you come up, Paulina? So, I'll do the numbers first, and then we'll kind of... And I've stayed away from numbers, just so you know, and they both know this. We haven't done numbers at all this year. But GPA of 100.1052, give or take. That's incredibly impressive. What Paulina is doing is... Oh, you want to clap? Okay, we'll clap. Paulina is going to be... Is planning to take a gap year, but she's not doing it to find herself. I think she has a pretty good idea about what she wants to do and who she... What she wants to be when she grows up, because she's... Well, she's pretty much there. But she's going to be studying ecological engineering, right? Is that pretty much what it is? Hopefully, on a program out in Arizona, and then she'll be coming back, and she'll be attending a school next fall. But she's currently the vice president of the National Art Honor Society, treasurer of the lead mentoring program, a member of the National Honor Society, National French Honor Society. She was the sophomore class vice president and the junior class president. Throughout high school, she's been invested in music and art. She's a senior art major and a member of the Chamber Orchestra, Jazz Ensemble, and the Musical Pit Orchestra, and has participated in the all-county and area, all-state musical festivals, as well as the NISM Solo Festival. She was also the District 18 Congressional Art Competition winner, and the winner of the People's Choice Award in the Orange County High School Art Celebration. In her four years, Paulina has also volunteered as an assistant for the Grand Canyon Trust and as a counselor for Synergia Learning Ventures. So, let me just say something about both Paulina and Katherine. When we look at salutatorians and valedictorians, we often think, gosh, we know they're smart. They get great grades. These two young adults are as good as we can possibly have at Monroe Woodbury. They are smart, they're accomplished, they're going to go off and change the world. But more than anything else, they are such incredibly nice, good people. And we said this early on in the school year, I have no doubt that the two of them will use their powers for good. And they will go out and they will do something amazing, and I only hope that you remember all of us little people when you're off, like, you know, doing your big thing. But to say I'm proud of both of you is an understatement. I've gotten to know Katherine and her family over the last couple of years, especially through St. Patrick's Bible School. Paulina, I've known since she was about this big at North Main. So, I won't take all the credit, Mrs. Chizov. I won't... You know, sorry. But I'm totally going to take some. And you've got Dolores Turecki out there, who's going to try and take some more, too. But congratulations. I'm really just so happy it's going to be the two of you. I cannot wait for graduation. I can't wait to listen to your speeches. They'll be better than everyone except for the board president, of course. Sorry, Mrs. Rodriguez. They'll be better than ours.
They will be.
But congratulations. Have a wonderful night. Go get your certificate and your pin. All right. Thank you very much. And you, too.
They're going to take a picture.
Stacy to assist.
There's an anonymous quote that reads, "Volunteering is the ultimate exercise in democracy. You vote in elections once a year, but when you volunteer, you vote every day about the kind of community you want to live in every day." This year, this next group volunteered countless hours to support our children and to help create a wonderful sense of community here in our district. The following 2017 PTA Presidents are Kim LaScorsie for the high school, Dawn Talbert for the middle school, Susan Cirillo for Central Valley Elementary, but she could not be here, Kate McPee for North Main Elementary, Noreen Basely for Sapphire Elementary, Shannon DuKane for Smith Clove, and we have two co-presidents for Septa, Alicia Fabagiano and Tara Solvik-Bendau, and Dawn Talbert for PTA Council. Thank you, ladies.
The 2017 Community Connection Awards presented by Dr. Eric Hassler. Don Beeler assisting.
Good evening, everyone. Following Mrs. Rodriguez's theme of volunteering, one of the functions of the district leadership committee is to annually award the Community Connection Awards. The criteria for the awards are as follows. The individual, business, or organization must contribute either time or recesses to the district and exemplify the spirit of Monroe Woodbury. We currently offer eight awards, one for each of our schools, which are seven, and one by PTA Council. Each of our principals will come up and award the organization or individual their respective awards. The first award is going to be announced by both Karen Brock, principal of Sapphire Elementary, and Christine Ricker, assistant principal from Smith Clove.
Mr. Birchthol is an extremely caring and compassionate man who has touched the lives of our Sapphire and Smith Clove students through his participation in the Tail Wagging Tutor Program. Through his therapeutic canine program, Cliff and his standard poodle, Baron, visited numerous classrooms on a weekly basis. His kind and gentle ways helped ease our students' anxiety, as he and Baron earned the students' trust and friendship. Cliff and Baron participated in our reading groups, library classes, circle time, nature trail walks, and science lessons. Mrs. Ricker?
Cliff and Baron quickly became full-fledged members of the Monroe Woodbury School District staff. Their time that they spent with our students was invaluable. It made a tremendous, indelible, and positive marks on our students and our staff's lives. Thank you so much for everything. And we do have a little token of our appreciation for Baron and for Cliff. We have photo albums for both buildings.
He did the job. I was just the handler.
Thank you.
Here this evening, presenting the award for Central Valley, is the principal, Mrs. Dolores Turecki, and assistant principal, Mr. Mike Barone. It's a duo.
Why is she scared?
My name is Dolores Turecki, and I'm the principal of Central Valley Elementary. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. We have nominated someone who has been very, very helpful to not us, of course, but to our students. We often encourage our young ladies to do better and get out and be strong, and this woman has helped us tremendously this year. And Mr. Barone would like to read something that he has prepared.
Thank you, Mrs. Turecki. Good evening, everyone. Just to give you a little background, in 2000, the year 2000, Girls on the Run International was an organization that was born, and it started with one school. And the school actually, from 2000 to today, there were over 200 councils in all of 50 states that has the Girls on the Run program. And to give you a little idea of what the program stands for, meet twice a week, and it's for girls in grades three through five. And the program invites students to come in after school, and it's an interactive program that fosters building relationships, teamwork, empowering the young minds, motivating girls, encouraging them to have lifelong health and fitness goals, building confidence through accomplishment, develop social, psychological, physical skills, and while having fun and feeling good about themselves. We've had a chapter at Central Valley for three years now, and the chapter runs in the fall and the spring, and again, they meet twice a week. And we have somebody who has been with the program since its onset three years ago. And that person is actually a volunteer, again, twice a week, every week throughout the school year, volunteers all of her time. And I want... I'd like to point out that this person, while she has children in the district, she does not have children in Central Valley at this time. And I don't believe she's had children at Central Valley even when she joined on as a coach. So, it's a very special person, and I got to tell you, the girls really look forward to the after-school session. In fact, just today, they met, and we forgot. I forgot to announce... I forgot to announce that the Girls on the Run program was in session, and I'm standing outside at dismissal, and there I see the group getting ready. They're walking, they're running, they're jogging, and I didn't even have to call them down at dismissal. They were already eager and anxious to meet with the coach, and that coach is here this evening, Miss Allison Heater. Again, Mrs. Heater is a volunteer, and she volunteers all of her time. Very, very appreciative. Thank you, Mrs. Heater.
Unfortunately, Mr. Cota was not able to make it this evening. He's the principal at North Main. But here in his place is North Main principal, Honore...
It's my high school principal.
Are you? I forget which job you have.
No, on paper, I think I'm still the North Main principal for a couple more days. I was at the high school for a little bit. You've heard the last two groups that have come up have talked about what it means in terms of empowering others, service and supporting kids. At North Main, there are a lot of programs and a lot of people that can kind of define what the heart of a building is. But I don't think there's any experience that our students have at North Main that's bigger or does a better job of that than our drama production. From the time, it starts in September with auditions, and there are... Even before they try out, there are workshops to teach kids how to try out, and then they audition, and then they just kind of do their thing. A few years ago, we were trying to raise some money, and you kind of come up with creative ways, because everyone tries to make, you know, fundraise, right? So, we go to McDonald's, and they're so nice, and we fundraise, and it's wonderful. It's a great night, and they give us a percentage of the money. But one of the most amazing things that happens at the North Main productions is a bake sale, which may not sound like much. It may sound like, oh, it's just a bake sale, and it's probably against some policy that we have, but that's okay. No, not McDonald's. McDonald's is totally okay with the policy. But what's... That's great. Thanks. That's good. So, I'm not the North Main principal anymore. But what they... What started out as an opportunity just to raise some extra money became, in and of itself, a wonderful part of the entire drama production. What Mrs. Scanlon started, and what she continues, is this army of volunteers who come with... When I tell you, pounds and pounds and pounds of baked goods. And it's gotten to a point where it's almost like this... You know, they're all on like a cooking show, where they're all competing, and it's like Cupcake Wars, and they come in, and you get the one person, and then... But there's no snickering, there's no judgment. Everybody's nice about it. But Mrs. Scanlon's are always the best. And then she organizes everything. What she has done for us is amazing. What we had this year, we had... There was some inclement weather. We lost a show. It was not stressful at all. And we said, oh, poor Miss Murray's like, we have like $1,000 worth of baked goods. What are we going to do? And we had an event. I think we had a basketball game or something at the high school. We said, bring it down. And these kids, really organized in a lot of ways by Mrs. Scanlon, came in their full costumes. They had a bake sale, and they made back most of the money that they would have lost, which was amazing. But Mrs. Scanlon's a parent. She's not an employee. But you represent truly what is best about North Main, and you're just a... You're kind of a small part, because there are a lot of people who do a lot of great things, but you're an incredibly important part. So, congratulations, Mrs. Michelle Scanlon.
Here this evening, presenting the award for Pine Tree, is Mr. Brian Judice, the Pine Tree principal.
On behalf of the Pine Tree BLC, I want to share a little bit about our nominee. We have a proud partnership with Mount St. Mary College, and over the past four years, they have... Or we have together presented a math night at Pine Tree, where over 200 kids each night have come out, and they've had a chance to work with our college students from Mount St. Mary College Math Department, who are learning to be teachers, to have a real-life, you know, experience working with our Pine Tree students. And over the past four years, it's been amazing. So much that even Barbara Braddell wrote about it in the Times for a Record a couple of years ago. So, we're very proud of our partnership with Mount St. Mary College. And with that, I would like to introduce Dr. Lee Fathergill from Mount St. Mary College. Thank you very much, Lee, for all your work about four years ago. Yes, give him a lot of applause. About four years ago, we reached out to the college, and Dr. Fathergill was kind enough to kind of share some thoughts, and we planned together. And over the past four years, we've worked out a nice system. And so, the kids love it, and every year, the kids are, you know, just so excited to come out and enjoy and work with math. So, it's a win-win for everybody, for the college students and for the Pine Tree students. So, thank you so much. Thank you.
And here this evening, to present the award for the middle school, is Mr. John Casti, the middle school principal.
It's my honor to present our Community Connection Award this evening. Each year, when we get to this point of the year and deciding who we're going to pick as our winner, there's always several candidates. But this year, there was none that could touch the one we're awarding tonight. Ms. Dawn Talbert works tirelessly for our middle school, for our community. Ms. Dawn Talber works tirelessly for our middle school, for our community. She takes the word volunteer to the next level. Well, I might as well just give her an office here, because she's here all the time. But she's here doing great things for our students, she helps us with our field trips. Recently, she helped organize the eighth-grade cruise to the high school party, and worked with our community to bring in donations and help our students have a great event. She even got myself and the three assistant principals to dress up a little silly, and I don't know if anyone has seen it, but that picture's now on the webpage, Facebook, photo news, so. I still felt she deserved the award even after she did that to us. So without further ado, I would love to present this award to our recipient, Dawn Talber.
And I'm going to keep Mrs. Talber up on stage. She's going to be presenting on behalf of the PTA Council. You have to go get it. Okay. Endgame scores.
Together with the PTA units in our district, PTA Council presents our Community Connection Award this year to the Monroe Woodbury Special Olympics Committee. Although the members of the committee are employees of our district, the time spent on this event was completely voluntary. We felt that each member, Eric Ullau, Brian Judice, and Nicole Reagan, put their heartfelt efforts into making the event a memorable day in our Monroe Woodbury community and beyond. The mission of Special Olympics is to create a world of inclusion and respect, and the committee worked together to make this happen. It was a special day that empowered our students to feel included and respected. It also offered the students a chance to share their gifts and skills while raising awareness about the abilities of people with physical and/or intellectual disabilities. Thank you for giving our Special Olympic athletes the chance to inspire, realize their potential, develop physical fitness, demonstrate courage, and experience sportsmanship and friendship.
I just want to say, it's so important for this district and the teachers and all the staff to partner with parents, but just as important is partnering with organizations and people in the community who are willing to give of themselves, because this district is the community, and the community is this district. It's intertwined. So we thank all of the people, many who, many, many, many who weren't recognized tonight, who give of their time and effort and expertise. So I want to thank them. Recognition of Athletic Championship Teams, again, Dr. Eric Hassler.
Before I continue with that, I should note that Mr. William Dimmitt will be receiving the Community Connection Award for the high school. He was unable to attend this evening, so we will be recognizing him at next week's Board of Education meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Dimmitt is the goods. So we had a very, very, very successful three seasons for our athletic teams this year. The athletic awards ceremony is actually happening right now at the high school, so our teams weren't able to be represented, to be recognized individually. However, I'll just quickly read through the various accomplishments that they achieved. For the fall season 2016, the championship teams were as follows. Boys varsity cross-country, OCIA Division One champions. Girls varsity cross-country, OCIA Division One champions. OCIA County champions, Section Nine champions. Boys varsity soccer, OCIA Division One champions. Girls varsity soccer, OCIA Division One champions and Section Nine champions. Girls varsity swim team, OCIA Division One champions. Our winter season, girls varsity basketball, OCIA Division One champions and Section Nine champions. Varsity ice hockey, Section Nine champions. Boys varsity swimming, OCIA Division One champions. OCIA County champions, Section Nine champions. New York State qualifiers. Boys varsity track, OCIA Division One champions. Girls varsity track, OCIA Division One champions. OCIA County champions, Section Nine champions. New York State qualifiers. Varsity wrestling, OCIA Division One champions. Section Nine dual champions. Section Nine tournament champions. New York State first place, Kendall Elstrom. Kendall will be attending and wrestling in the Ivy League at Princeton next year. And we also won the New York State second-place team. For the spring season, girls varsity golf, OCIA Division One tri-champions. Boys varsity lacrosse, OCIA Division One champions. And for the first time in school history, Section Nine champions. Varsity softball, OCIA Division One champions. Boys varsity track, OCIA Division One champions. And girls varsity track, OCIA Division One champions. OCIA County champions, Section Nine champions. Not listed in your program, I like to acknowledge this every year as well, 24 out of our 27 varsity programs were recognized by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association as Scholar-Athlete Teams, which means that 75% of the team had 90%, a 90% average. The three teams that did not get recognized missed it by 1/100 of a point, their average was 89.99. One team missed it by 1/10 of a point, 89.9, and one team missed it by half a point, 89.5, of all 27 varsity programs. So not only are they great athletes, they are also tremendous scholars as well. Thank you.
And before the further acknowledgements of retiring staff and tenured employees, Harry LaFever, do you have a motion?
I'd ask that the board move the items under Personnel, item number 10, so that the people will be bringing up, some of those who are retiring will actually have been approved for retirement, and those who are going to be recognized for tenure will also be approved for tenure by the board. So I'd ask that you move...
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion there being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. And now retiring staff, Harry LaFever presenting, and the board assisting.
Good evening. It's a pleasure for me to recognize those members of the Monroe Woodbury family who will be retiring or have retired at some point throughout this school year. I'm going to be reading off about 40 names from the four different bargaining units, and some have already started their retirement, others will be waiting until the end of the school year. And through the motion that was just approved, we have included those who are on tonight's agenda. So starting with the administrators who will be retiring or have retired this year, William Blaser, Alan Faldemeyer, Ron Montalto, and Dolores Terleki. I would throw out a number of the cumulative years of experience amongst the administrators, but I am the HR guy, and I know that I can't do that. And mostly Bill. Members of the Monroe Woodbury Teachers Association who are retiring this year, Robert Barlow, Joe Birdsall, Frances Callen, Jacqueline Capola, Colleen Calaluka, Bernard Connolly, Carol Durkin, Mary Maroney, Joanne Noldekin, Teresa Path, Valerie Polk, Julie Primack, Georgia Rampy, Nancy Rebus, Lola Rooney, Gail Savarise, Beth Thorpe, and Karen Zuzik. Did you get the picture before I call the next group? The members of the MWEA who are retiring this year, George Armstrong, Laura Curtis, Diane Humphrey, Nada Megan, Patricia O'Driscoll, Angela Smith, Tom Stalzer, and Mary Streineck. Daria Mitchell, Michelle Ortiz, Faith Pasqual, Kathleen Riordan, John Snodder, Louise Stewart, and Robert Wolf. Again, I'd like to congratulate those members of the Monroe Woodbury family who are moving into retirement this year, and I wish them the best of luck and hope they have better success as it than I have had over the last 10 years. The next group of the family that we're going to honor tonight are those staff members who have reached the milestone of tenure in the district. That's two or three years of completing a probationary appointment. For some of the staff we're recognizing tonight, it is their second area of tenure. They will receive a certificate and a PIN acknowledging that their service deserves an A+ for their dedicated ways, the efforts they show, and deserve our praise. We're grateful our school has people like you who put their heart into all that they do. So they'll each receive a PIN as well as the certificate. Jessica Babcock, Samantha Baldwin, Caitlin Bloomberg, Maureen Cottington, Adam Conforti, Karen Escobar, Elizabeth Granberg, Kimberly Harrison, Matthew Holbrook, Corey Lowny, So you get tenure, your dad retires. Congratulations to all those staff members who have received tenure.
We'd like to recognize, I guess, we don't have board members who are retiring, although we have an ex officio board member who is leaving us because he is graduating and going on to bigger and better things, I trust. Daniel Willis, who is our first. Daniel Willis, who is our first ex officio board member. I just want to say, Dan came in and decided how he was going to operate and went to the schools and mixed it up with the students and talked with the principals and staff and came back and reported to us with great enthusiasm. And he has also had an absolutely terrific experience entirely through his career here at Monroe Woodbury. And if he does half of what he did for us at the board, he's going to be terrifically successful. So thank you for inaugurating this position for the Board of Education. John, they wanted to take a picture. Take a picture.
We should all be with him.
With you.
Me?
Whole board, all of us.
The whole board?
plumber at my house. I used to have hot water. And he just flooded. He ran the hot water and one of the sinks flooded the sink. Kathy's texting me saying, because the water's running, this is our kitchen. The water's running out of the lights. The water's running.
And now the presentation of the yearbooks to the Board of Education. High school presenter, Matthew Kravitz.
All right, so this is not about me. When I started at the high school, one of the first two people I had a chance to meet were Rachel Rosario and Laura Gary. And what they do in terms of, they're not just your typical club advisors. And you'll see, and they'll explain what the book's all about. But this thing is gigantic. It has, when you first get a yearbook, it comes nicely wrapped. And then it almost has, you know when you get a new car and you like the new car smell? I think new yearbook smell should be something that Yankee Candle should invent. It's awesome. So I'm going to have Rachel and Laura come up and explain everything about the yearbook. And this group of kids, my gosh, they are impressive. And the yearbook itself is incredibly impressive. So thank you very much. You ready?
Was it me? Was it me? Then why should I look at her?
So I'm Rachel Rosario and I've been advising the yearbook with Laura Gary for eight years now, 10 years for her. And every year Laura and I ask how we're going to get the kids to create another book with the same quality as all the years before. Yet again, our dedicated students have come together and have exceeded our expectations, which if you ask them are pretty high most of the time. This group of talented students have managed to create one of our largest yearbooks ever. It is 320 pages, all color. And it will revive students' memories years after high school. Laura and I just want to thank our students for their continued effort, their dedication and their partnership, as well as our community, the parents, our administrators, Life Touch Photography Company, Herve Jones, who produces our yearbook as well, and for our contributions and support that allow us to put together this tremendous book. It's massive, every year. So this is Isabella Minutulo. She's our junior assistant editor. And she wants to just take a moment to tell you guys a little bit about this year's book and the theme. And also just wanted to mention that this year's book is dedicated in memory of Debbie Perez.
The theme of the 55th volume of the Monroe Woodbury Shield is revive. To revive something means to give something new strength, energy, or life to it. And that's the ultimate purpose of a yearbook, to refresh and restore your memories of the times you spent walking the halls of Monroe Woodbury High School after you have left them. Many have plans to graduate and move on in furthering their education in the field they desire. We also have other students who have decided to join the military instead and serve our country first, then furthering their life how they choose. There are also the students who do have a desire to further their education but first take a break year and travel the world, learning ways of society and putting their time in for volunteer. Yet we all want to see where life has to take us. But as we move on with our lives, we are going to want to look back on our high school years, for the most important years of our lives. The years where we learned who we are, who we want to be, the friends that have came into our lives and the memories we spent with them. It won't always be the easiest to remember everything that went on during our high school years, but we do have our yearbooks to help us. For me, I look to the book and I think about myself in the future, opening this book and reviving all the memories I had at school, all the memories with my friends and everything they gave me as I grew with them.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now the presentation of the middle school yearbook, Mr. John Casti. Come on down.
Good evening and thank you for once again having us here so we can present the yearbooks. Ms. Koch and Ms. Roman have worked very hard this year with our students to create a yearbook that I think is the best that has been produced in the five years I've been in the middle school. These students worked tirelessly with them. The great part is I have an arrangement that I have to approve all the pages, so I actually kind of saw the book before you guys get it. But they did a great job of really incorporating the spirit, the community of our school. And to speak about that a little bit further, I have Ms. Roman and Ms. Koch.
Hello, I'm Danielle Roman. Two members of our yearbook team are going to pass out the yearbooks, Madeline Baxardi and Justin Taunton. This year's theme was Dare to Be.
Hey, hello, I'm Laura Koch. As you receive your yearbook, take a look at the front of the cover. You'll see their words flashed over the cover. Those are all adjectives. They're generated by the students. And we asked the students, what do you dare to be? And those are the adjectives the students came up with. Some of the adjectives for the audience are open-minded, devoted, grateful, amongst many others. This year's yearbook and these words, they really represent what the middle school students dare to be now and what they dare to be in coming years and the future.
My name is Justin Taunton. I'm in eighth grade. That was in the yearbook club this year. I enjoyed working on the yearbook and learning about the computer program behind the final product. My favorite part of the yearbook are the superlatives on page 52 to 55.
Please turn to page 52 to 55.
Okay. Every eighth grader got a chance to vote for all these categories. All eighth grade students had a part in these pages. The yearbook club worked very hard to put this together. I also want to say thank you to Ms. Koch and Mrs. Roman. I look forward to helping with the yearbook next year.
Hi, my name is Madeline Baxardi and I am in eighth grade. I was also a part of the yearbook club this year. My favorite page of the yearbook is page 18 or 19. Please turn to these pages.
Page 18 and 19.
These pages show all the siblings in the school with at least one sibling in eighth grade. It also shows the staff and faculty with a child in eighth grade. I like these pages because it shows the relationships we have with each other and how we're all growing up together with our families. I really enjoyed working on the yearbook and I am proud of the work we did.
Thank you. Thank you, middle school. Thank you, high school. A reminder to the board that if you so choose to donate your yearbook back to the buildings or to Leah, these yearbooks will be given to students in need who might not otherwise be able to afford them. We have a reception to go to, so, and please, please join. And so I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
So carried, this meeting is adjourned.